Public object for our planning commission. Could we please stand for moment of silence? Edge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would note that we have all members in attendance. I did have communication from our alternate this afternoon that he was unable to attend this evening. So moving forward, following the agenda, what other information regarding the minutes discussed presented in your package from our September 19 meeting? I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion from a minute. I have a second from Justin. Any discussion corrections? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have no zoning hearing scheduled. There had been a notice, a legal notice of a zoning hearing that is not happening. Was there a cancellation notice placed in the legal notices? Do you need to do that?
I'm not, I'd have to double check, but I've not done that before. Typically, the cancellation, we send a cancellation notice to the applicant and the doors will be posted.
Okay, I didn't know if there was, because you see in the legal notices, such and such meaning is canceled, I wasn't sure if we had to do the same.
I could check, I've never had to do that before.
Okay, thank you, Jessica.
Yeah.
We have no engineers reviews, no demolitions. Our one action item this evening is 445 Livingston Street motion to amend the zoning ordinance, all kinds of signs. This is the item that was tabled from our August meeting. Part of the reason for tabling at that time was we were looking for the comments, the rights to county planning commission. We were also looking for our places 2040 off plan, COVID 2040, to be officially adopted, which it was at the September 26 council meeting. So, because we wanted to make any changes in compliance with that document. I see the applicants are here tonight. If you would care to.
Sure. Good evening. Claudia Shines with McNeese Law and NER. I'm here on behalf of Hoop Tree Outdoor Advertising, joined by Devin Wagner this evening, who is the president of Hoop Tree. I thought it would be helpful to just kind of go back over the presentation a little bit. I'm not going to go into as much detail as we did last time, but I know that it's been almost two months, so if you can remember all the details of what we presented two months ago, your memory is much better than mine. We are here to present an amendment to your zoning ordinance that would allow us to construct a digital billboard at the property located at 445 Livingston Street. This was formerly the site of the Columbia Borough Visitor Information Center. It's located in the Highway Commercial Zoning District, close proximity to Route 30. In terms of the chronology, and your chairwoman summarized this nicely, we originally came in to talk with staff about our proposal to construct this billboard in the spring of 2023. We did decide to take the route of requesting an amendment to the zoning ordinance rather than going to the zoning hearing board. We thought that this would be a more appropriate way to address our request. We did submit petition in July to amend the zoning ordinance. We were in front of you in August, and again, at that point in time, we were waiting for the county and also waiting for the adoption of Columbia 2040. So the county did provide their comments on the petition. They recommended approval, but if you review the letter from the county, there's not a lot of substance to it because the county's places 2040 really doesn't address signage in any kind of substantive way. And of course, now your comprehensive plan has been adopted, so I think, you know, we're in a position to have a more robust discussion about what's being proposed. The board that's proposed and... We shared this with you last time. We did update the logo to the borough's current logo. We're proposing a V-style board with two faces. It would be 45 feet tall and 672 feet per sign base, base rather, visible from Route 30. We are proposing that there would be branding of borough signage and logo incorporated into the base and that we would have sort of a gateway component feature to it since we recognize that this is a gateway into the community, so that there could be some identification for the borough there as well. The existing regulations that your zoning ordinance has for billboards, they are permitted in this zoning district, but they're fairly restrictive and I would say not in keeping with the typical minimum size requirements for billboards along corridors like Route 30, which are obviously heavily traveled and at fairly high speeds. So the current regulations require billboards to be set back at least 25 feet from any lot line or street right of way. There's a maximum sign area of 300 square feet, maximum height is 25 feet, and the message on the sign can change only once every 30 seconds. So we're proposing an amendment to the ordinance that would establish a separate set of regulations which would apply only to billboards that are visible from limited access highways in the Highway Commercial District. So really, that limits our proposal to boards in the Highway Commercial District along Route 30. And I'll share with you as well, there is a state law requirement when you're along a PENDUP road that billboards can only be placed once every 500 feet from one another. So really, the practical effect of that is this property is, I think we're pretty confident, the only location with these amendments that the size could count. There would be a reduced setback requirement, five feet from all lot lines and street rights of way, maximum area of 672 feet per sign. That's typical of the boards that you will see as you drive along the Route 30 corridor, maximum height of 45 feet. Again, typical boards that you'll see along that stretch of road. Could not be within 100 feet of an existing dwelling, and the message would be permitted to change once every 30 seconds. So as I indicated earlier, we're back because the comprehensive plan has now been adopted, and so we reviewed the comprehensive plan to see how this proposal is in or out of compliance with that. We do think that it complies in a number of respects with the comprehensive plan that you adopted. Just a couple of things that I will point out to you. First of all, your future land use map for the borough does identify this area as a gateway commercial neighborhood where it recognizes there's going to be moderate intensity, automobile-oriented uses, and transit-oriented development. We think this is very consistent with that. This also fits into two of the bold ideas from the implementation guide that was published along with your plan. So you have a more feet in the street goal, which is really an economic development problem, and part of that is to develop a signage study for the borough, and that goal also fits the importance of having signage at the main gateways to the borough. And in fact, this Route 30 off ramp was identified in a prior study the borough conducted in 2015 that's referenced in your plan as an important place for ray finding signage and gateway location. So for that reason, we think it's appropriate here. Your plan also has a telling our story component, which talks about marketing and tourism, universal branding to be used throughout the borough, and again, we think we could tie that in with this sign to bring a nice gateway feature and component to the borough, you know, along with the billboard. So with that, by way of background, we know there were questions last time. We're certainly happy to dive into any that you have through this evening and provide any additional information you need to make your decision.
What's the, what are the dimensions of what's proposed here? I know that the amendment, you know, isn't specific to this, but what's the, what are the length by width?
This is 14 feet in height by 40 feet in width as far as the billboard signage is.
And how does that generally compare to like the static ones that are by the exit already?
Those are comparable. Those are 672 square feet, 14 by 48. It's an industry standard size for limited access highways.
Is that 672 foot on those sides?
Is correct. As is with the other interior structures that are on the 30 corridor.
Because our current signage ordinance is for 300 square feet, and that basically says it would be 150 square feet on each side if it's two-sided.
Correct. Which isn't really in line with the district standards or PENDUP standards. So PENDUP, an organization across the state, allows up to 1,200 square feet per side, which we're not expecting that in this area. But anything else that you travel along the 30 corridor, 200 corridor, then Lancaster, it's 672 square feet per face or sign base.
Could you please identify yourself?
Sure. Devin Wagner, president of Hoop Tree Outdoor Advertising.
Thank you.
So the ones that are, I mean, broadly speaking, talking specifically to those that are along the limited access highway, but as we go down 462 by the Mount Bill Motors or, yeah, he's been in here a few times. Those billboards there are probably 150 on each side, but if they're max at 300, they're smaller.
I believe those are, those are permitted because they're on state primary road artery. The smaller one, that would be 300 square feet, would be right by Burger King, they're exposed by kind of on the Turkeyville complex, right around there is the 300s.
Okay.
Which is very typical for secondary artery roadways throughout the county and throughout the state.
What's the distance, is that 500 feet from this location to the Turkeyville?
It's actually further than that. There is a board that's west of this location. I think the closest board is 672 square feet to the west. So 632, our proposed sign would be 632 feet away from the board that is located. The bullet tip that's out on 30 at Turkeyville Experience, kind of by Turkeyville Experience's on-premise sign. And the distance between that board on 30 and the board that I was referencing that's on the side, North Third Street, is 250, six feet away as the road flies. Then you have two other structures down along the river on North Oak Street.
So I know that you guys, back in August, spoke about the, I guess, the time between, the duration between them being changed. So this is to be seven seconds. The email that we received today about the research, it says about seven to 10 seconds attract more glances than suggest a number larger than 10 seconds. What do you see, I mean, you do to work elsewhere?
PENDUP is five seconds is where they have it set. Typically, I have 60 digital faces throughout Central Pennsylvania. I would say on average, 10 seconds is the average. City of Lancaster, seven seconds. And then I have a board in New Jersey, Turnpike, that's 10 seconds. Harrisburg, Latara Township, 10 second dwell time. Gulf County Steel Team on Turnpike is six second dwell time. So 10 seconds is kind of more than normal, but five seconds is a little too short. But it also depends on visibility, how to be approached to the board, if it's a long approach or a shorter approach. The idea is that when somebody's in the ideal viewing distance between where they're seeing the board, where it's created, set up, and scheduled for them to be visible, that the board is basically scattered for that time frame, and that's really where the people would turn to in 10 seconds.
So I know that instead of, you know, Mark at the last meeting said that it was about three or 300 to 500 feet from, and you start to come up by the exit to the sign location.
Actually, what I laid out, and I'd like to share, as you go underneath the bridge, the underpass, that's about 930 feet from where the proposed sign today is the, and actually, based on the positioning of this property and lot with the exit ramp, the board would actually be positioned to the right, so it wouldn't be a fully visible sign, you're kind of just peeling out of the sign, where you finally get into where the board would be ideal, it's not 500 feet, as I mentioned, it would be 10 seconds, and that's actually kind of right where after people have been positioned that they're exiting.
Off.
And it's kind of where the two heads are heading, kind of these paths. And I have a map that I just had a feeling I could share with you right now, if people got it. And what's the timing that you're looking for?
Seven.
Seven, 27?
Seven.
I have five of these seven here. And if you go through, and if you go to the next pages, you'll see the distribution of 500, 600. So in the window, ideal window of opportunity, basically 600 feet, somebody has already decided whether or not they're exiting or whether or not they're expounding. And that's kind of where we're pretty set up to fully do the whole like, and so forth on the board.
And I think that the larger sign would actually be less distracting because the smaller one is harder to read.
It is harder to read, yeah. What's the, how often does that change? The small one, that's the shape recovery put up. Would that have to be the?
Seven seconds.
The picture that you presented before for the bottom of it is different. Are you planning to go with this now with the logo more so than the warning?
We changed it to the updated logo, I believe. And I think that's where there was a little, like, there were two different logos that were kind of present there six months ago. From, I understand this is a long-standing topic.
So is it just the logo or will it say, I can't see it?
This says your town ties into, I think, the branding.
And is that what I'm being saying, Columbia? Is that something you would do?
Correct, yeah. So anything that you see with the billboard and then also the base and the landscaping around, I pictured this wall to be, depending on, obviously, you got to figure out based off of the property, but two to three feet in height, and then this would be channel letters on the wall that potentially would be back in the future below at night to highlight Columbia.
Can you do that with the other sign?
So I have a sign on Monks Park that we ended up a little different where we did below digital face, we did the back of the box on each side that basically says Monks Park, that means basically, and in that same sign, I do have architectural elements off that sign tying specifically to the exact dimensions of the amphitheater with the angles on that course when we built the second one there that we named, so we felt we were able to work, and so that was one place. And I think that's another one that's something that I am almost completely, that it will have an element that's kind of similar to this.
I think it's beautiful. I think it's a gateway.
That makes it more of a gateway.
In a three-year time period, there were between eight and 11 accidents between the 441 overpass and Fifth Street. These were all property damage. There were no reported injuries.
Mary, would I be able to review what I sent out to the planning commission?
Yes.
With that up, this ain't a conversation.
I would like Jessica to review that. I had hoped to have had these figures from the police department at our August meeting. I did not get them in time, but in a three-year period, there were eight accidents and mobbing property damage in that area. And it's a scary spot for Columbia.
Mary, would a police be able to give you any information as far as from the reports, as far as, you know, what was, what was caused, was distraction or?
No.
No, really, it's just people just trying to cram themselves or drasmening into that turn lane.
We can find it, though. That information is available.
But I'd like Jessica to go over the research that she has done in the last week or so on this.
So this is an interesting topic, and I do, before I go into this, I completely agree with what these guys are saying in terms of this proposal being consistent with the comprehensive plan. And definitely moving towards accomplishing goals that were in the components, telling our story and the economic development, more feet in the street. This conversation is more about how do we balance those positive attributes of this with the potential negative attributes of increasing risk. And so the big thing to keep in mind with this conversation is we haven't, there is no scientific information yet collated that completely ties the number of crashes or an increase of crashes to billboards and digital billboards. However, that being said, what we can pinpoint to are increased levels of risk, right? So we can't for sure say 100% that this is going to increase crashes, but what we can say with a lot of certainty is that this type of signage can increase the risk of a crash in a particular area, and there are certain things that make that risk higher than others. So number one would be the type of sign that's being proposed, and I get it, these are beautiful and they communicate a lot of information, but these are very loaded advertising signs which are known to cause the most amount of distraction for road users, which is what you want because it's a road sign. You want people to see it. So this is a conversation, if we know it's going to increase risk, how do we mitigate that risk? So definitely what was talked about before, the dwell time. The dwell time coupled with the uniqueness of this particular location, and research does suggest that this already is a difficult traffic area. Drivers are being forced to make split-second decisions on the merge that they need to make, people merging next to them, whether or not someone is staying in the lane, continuing through into Lancaster, or getting off in Columbia, or vice versa. And then you add a sign to that, that increases the level of risk for a potential crash. The other thing to keep in mind is that we as, you know, potential prey animals back in the day, we are wired to see changes in our periphery. So as the sign changes, it's immediately going to drag somebody, which it's supposed to do. The more a sign changes, the more someone's going to stare at it, waiting for that change, taking their eyes off the road. So one way to definitely mitigate the risk here is to make sure that that dwell time is 10 seconds or longer for this particular area. There were some other items that I put into, you know, it looks like potentially, and this is all kind of being able to take with a grain of salt sort of stuff, but potentially we could see an increase of the risk of a crash by maybe 25% in an area near this signage. And so if we add that information to what Mary has seen in the crash information tool with PENDUP, you know, in a two-year time period, we saw around, maybe, let's just call it an even number of 10 crashes, a 25% increase would take us to maybe a standard of 12 to 13 crashes. So I think it's just gauging risk and how much risk are we willing to take on for the I can't remember if there was any other... The two biggest things are the fact that it's in a complex driving area and the dwell time.
Right.
Are the, seem to be the biggest safety risks.
May I ask a question? What's...
Yeah, so this is also important, and I pointed out, this is really difficult to find any sort of information. So what I found was a journal article from the Transportation Resource Part A, and I'll send it to you guys, I provided it to the planning commission, policy and practice. So it's the journal is called Transportation Research Part A, colon, policy and practice. It's a bi-monthly peer-reviewed scientific journal that's international. This research came out of Queensland, Australia, which I'm pretty sure I sent to you guys.
Yes, she did.
But it was heavily cited, definitely pointed out to different models that are used around the world to try and predict traffic and identify risk. I don't know. I would imagine regardless of the side that they're driving on, the risk level is the same.
So very familiar with this conversation, as I may have mentioned last time, four members of New York, which is the Outdoor Advertising Association of America, which is an organization that helps support the industry grow with a lot of collateral marketing material, but also on policy. And this obviously has been with the deployment of digitals over the last 20 or 25 years, it's been very much a button for communities and new estates across the country. And looking at those types of studies that have been done, and I think back in 2003, I believe there was a study that the Federal Highway CP Association did, and they actually did it in two areas that had a lot of digital billboards. It was right in Pennsylvania and I believe it was North Hook, Virginia, somewhere it sounds like.
Yeah, I have the exact article, stop quoting for it.
And then I do have also, and I can share with you, a brief traffic from UAAA that they put together, pulled together a bunch of different data from different communities that utilize digital in different cities, and there's been a lot of that there. The dwell time is definitely a point to draw my attention. The study that I'm referencing actually had individuals drive certain roadways and had helmet cams on to see what the gazes were, and I believe the number of the gazes was one and a half, two seconds was the most that the average person gazed, whether or not it was looking at billboard, or looking at dog, or a person that's walking on the road. So typically, it wasn't things that drawn significant businesses. A lot of the accident that I've already looked at from UAAA is coming into, that alcohol comes into play, a lot of accidents, distracted driving, which cell phones, radio, or car. So I know it's always been a big hot button. I don't think anybody's necessarily figured out that it's perfect, it is. But I can say, just looking at the county of Lancaster, relative to something that kind of sets up very much to how this is, I have a billboard at the intersection of 30 and 283. It's on Roseville Road, it's right across from Auto House, so traffic that's entering 283 can continue under the 30 bypass, or they can actually go on 30 West, and conforms to all city regulations as well as PENDUP regulations. I don't know the traffic numbers. I know that the city of Lancaster has spent a lot of time on traffic studies, I know they're giving that M0, or there's something, so they're looking at all that data, and it doesn't seem like anything specific is tied to that, which is very much like that.
Is it similar, and I may have missed it while I was thinking in my head, but is it similar? Is it on an interchange? Is it, does it have merging traffic?
It's, it's exiting traffic very much like this, people heading east, exiting traffic that wants off of 283 on the 30, and then people that are going down underneath 30, and then traffic's coming down.
You've got them going on the Chester Road, you've got them going over 283, you've got 283 coming under.
There's a lot of things, there's also other studies I have that I'd like to share with you. The thing here was Rochester, Minnesota, and then there's also, how it occurred, New Mexico, and they took a look at population bases. I believe Rochester, Minnesota, I think working system with Lancaster, however, it's a bigger city, and came back to that they, the studies have found that it doesn't increase the increase of accidents in small proximity to the horse. There's obviously a lot of other variables that go into somebody driving, making mistakes.
Yeah, and that's actually what this study said too, was that you're also dealing with folks that are maybe eating and driving, drinking and driving, talking with someone, having an argument, yeah.
Okay, could we let Brad jump in here? And this was from reading, Brad?
This whole entire article is about the, well, I'll read it to you. The title's called "Federal Highway Study Confirms Digital Billboard Safety." This study was conducted in 2007, and it kind of led... This study was conducted in 2007, and it kind of led. So, there were government watchdogs that were on the Transportation Authority to pick up the pace with this, because the rate in which these billboards were going up was exponentially going up. So, just to read this article as quickly as I can. It says, and this is 2014, this was enacted, "The United States Department of Transportation Federal Highway Administration has released a landmark study declaring that digital billboards do not pose a safety risk to passing motorists. Within the sign industry, the results of this study come as no surprise. Numerous traffic studies throughout the country and analyses performed in the last couple of decades have reached similar conclusions." And then, my highway, I'm sorry. It says, "This new peer-reviewed FHWA, which is the Federal Highway Administration, study should help put to rest concerns that digital billboards may pose a hazard to passing motorists. This study will help pave the way for communities to bring this powerful outdoor advertising medium to their communities benefiting not just local operators and advertisers, but the entire local economy as well. The report is divided into two studies officially titled, 'Driver Visual Behavior in the Presence of Commercial Electronic Variable Message Signs', which is what they're called. They're EV, well, CEVMS signs. It says, "The questions that were addressed, number one, do CEVMS or digital signs attract drivers' attention away from the forward roadway and other driving-relevant stimuli? Question two, do glances at these CEVMSs occur that would suggest a decrease in safety? And the third question that they wanted to address was, do drivers look at these CEVMSs more than they would a standard billboard? To conduct the study, the FHA tracked participants' eye movements with eye-tracking camera devices mounted in the vehicle. This device was able to track the driver's eyeball movement and determine if the driver was looking ahead at the roadway or off to the side of the roadway at a static billboard or a digital CEVMS. Drivers in Richmond, Virginia, and Reading, Pennsylvania participated in the study." And I did not know that you were going to have to bring that up tonight.
There's one landmark one, so. If I can get a first by reading this, it just passes out.
The research concluded that drivers do indeed look at digital billboards slightly longer than they do at static billboards. Glance duration towards a digital billboard averaged, and this differs with what you said, Gavin, of one to two seconds, it's actually 0.37 seconds that they stare at digital billboards, and they glance at static billboards at 0.33 seconds. So, we're talking less than a second to look and look away. Both of these measurements fall far below the benchmark of what would consist as a hazard. The results did show that drivers did slightly look at CEVMSs at a greater percentage of time than a standard billboard. However, the time spent looking at the off-premise advertising was less than 5% when signs were visible to the participants across the two experiments. The longest glance at any digital sign during the experiment was less than 1.3 seconds, and glances greater than one second were rare bets." And this goes on and on and on. It says, "In conclusion, the results did not prove evidence indicating that digital signs, CEVMSs, as deployed and tested in the two selected cities of Richmond and..."
Reading.
Reading, and Reading, were associated with unacceptably, unacceptably long glances away from the road.
This is actually a fat article, and it's 100,000,000 pages long, and has all those numbers.
I'll trade you. I'll send you the one that I found, and you can send it to me.
I have to keep, you probably have to share. And then, more recently, because that was from 2003, more recently, to other studies. I mean, that was the, I think they came back now because the reference study was this other one in 2009 or 2010, Howler Curd from Rochester, Rochester, so I'll share. The one thing that they do say with any digital sign, and a lot of times you notice they're more of the on-premise signs, small businesses, is the brilliance and whiteness that they have them being displayed. And the digital billboard industry as a whole, even digital billboard manufacturers, have utilized photocells. So, the boards, the light that they display is based on the ambient light around, so it's not the way it is in the lighting. But a lot of times, you know, the people get that opinion of any digital sign, being the ones that are on-premise, that are set at just some random number of hours, letting you drive by and actually burn your eyes. You don't really set a digital billboard industry, because they take a really strong opportunity at some other commercial store, and physically think of iron, and where you're connecting this way.
I also did a little bit more research as far as calculating the time in which it takes to get the intermodal experience to where the sign would be. And depending on speed varying 55 to 75, or more, you're looking at about 62 miles an hour. It's taking about five seconds. You, it's such a short period of time from Turkey Hill, you're zipping under that overpass, you're quickly seeing that sign, and you're moving on. It's not as if people are, this isn't an area, now, I've traveled this area. I've lived here for 23 years now. I've gone through all that exit thousands of times. And even in the last week, four or five times, and I passed by it. But the crashes that are going on here are that people are not paying attention to others. They're not necessary, and I pay attention to the sign that's on the property net for a split second. It tells me that Hinkels is open, or have you, and I'm looking over. You have to take into consideration what people's thought processes are when they're driving. Are they on their phone? Are they yelling with their children in the backseat? There has to be, the DOT had to come up with a distance on this that had to have shown that it was safe enough for the merge. And if there's accidents going on here, people are driving unsafe. They're driving at unsafe speeds, and they're merging on without looking. Now, I pictured this sign as I drove by with Tiffany numerous times. We circle back numerous times, circle back. And I pictured the little sign on this property right now, and I looked, I glanced over. But as I'm doing that, I'm making sure that what's in front of me is not directly in front of me. I don't have cars bumper to bumper. I'm not in a heavily congested area like you would be down by, no, that Hills Road going into York, where it's a lot, where it's a lot next to there.
My first line of this.
North.
This is an area where traffic, for the most part, is doing easily, 55 to 85 miles per hour. They're zipping through, and I, just in my opinion, based on my research while I've been out sick, I wanted to, and I read everything that Jessica, so I wanted to see what we had going on in the United States, what our studies were going on in the United States, our traffic in the DOT. And it's just my personal opinion, based on their scientific studies, based on our, I want to go with the exact word. It's the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Highway Administration concludes that it's not just in these two areas. These are landmark studies with tens of thousands of cars passing through these locations every single day, which is what we have all across the country. This isn't only Times Square or Manhattan or any part of the world. I mean, that's the craziest traffic in the world, if their audiences are different, you have signs every 10 feet. I see absolutely no problem, in my personal opinion. And that's without speaking with any, either from the audience, or knowing anybody from the audience, or even knowing that Devin would even have that study, found that study on now.
After hearing that, what I'd say is, the information that I found didn't have anybody who had done a scientific study measuring the glance. So, most of what I pulled together was just a risk assessment, right? Minus the data. Now, with this data that Brad has presented, which is amazing, it just goes to show you how often you need to try and search something to find the right data. That actually is in addition to, which makes me feel a lot better. Because honestly, I love the idea. It's just how you navigate the safety issue, and that makes me feel a lot better.
If you're not taking data into it, and you're just saying, hey, let's throw up a sign. It looks beautiful. It's going to beautify the area. It says Columbia and Georgetown. I would like it to say, welcome to Columbia, that's it.
But I have a comment. The sign isn't going to say, welcome to Columbia.
No, I know that.
I guess I don't.
No, I'm looking.
Why is it saying that this is such a gateway to Columbia?
No, because it is a gateway.
It is a gateway.
The road is a gateway.
Regardless of the size of the town.
But I see it a lot. But what you're flashing isn't going to be all about Columbia.
No, but don't get hung up on the sign, because what we're reviewing is the legislation. No, 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 I'm being serious. What we're reviewing are changes to the ordinance.
To make that sign, to a lot of the signings.
Sure, but the copy is not something, the copy is not something that we can legislate. So, they can put whatever they want on it.
So, we shouldn't be assuming that it's all about Columbia.
And we're not, we're not, we're not cleaning, but it's going to be.
No, they're not.
I think it's too red.
This already, well. Right, I'm talking about this too, that part on the bottom.
The other components of things as far as, as it relates to the overall market is, we're tied to amber alerts. We use things, whether or not it's amber alerts, there are components in our accounting. And there was also a component of actually even being able to, whether or not there's general already throughout your utilization space, and your cost, and also special grids to businesses to be able to utilize that to help support that risk from Columbia, and that fraction of that.
I don't know, for myself, you know, 45 foot high is much different than what the current one is. When I'm driving by, I see them, but it's kind of, I'm a crosshair. But when I get off the exit and the current sign, it's there, the lower sign, then I have a tendency to stare at it to see what the message is a little longer. Just to see, because it's more down at your eyesight level. That combined with, like you just said about the message board for the amber alert, that brings, I, the PENDA has, especially with what's going on with Center Road, they got those temporary signs. I tend to stare at those, to be honest, more than I stare at a billboard. Because you're looking at, oh, there's amber alert, what's that, what's that, what's that lights? You're trying to get it into your head, so those are, seem to me, a more attraction than any billboard.
Studies show that they.
Like Tiffany just said, there was another study, and I wish I had that with me right now. And it says that the signs that are directly on the highway themselves that state the amber alerts, not the signs off to the side, but when you're driving and you're taking your head off, and you're reading this as you're going by, those signs almost triple the rate of accidents as opposed, and it's literally said, as opposed to, and I'll find that if everybody wants that, as opposed to the off-premises signs. The ones that PENDA are putting on the highway, that are stating amber alerts, drive slowly because of the weather, what have you.
So many minutes to this road.
Triple the rate of accidents. Those are the signs when people are taking their eyes off the highway for a split second. I know I'm taking my eye. If I see a hawk up on a tree, and I'm driving down a highway, it warms my heart. I think of different people, but it's a split second, split second. I'm only doing it, I'm only doing it when I know it's safe in front of me to look at that sign. I'm not going to do it when traffic's backed up.
If you're backed up, you're not going to be able to, right, right.
I'm glad you brought that up, because those signs directly on the highway are more venusous, and more crashes happen, because of those. Even though I think that those signs are good, they need to be in situations in which death is still there. And that's what scientific data states.
And the area, I'm looking at the zoning map up there. And the area that you would be looking at this to apply to would be, I think it's Zoned Highway Commercial now.
It is. It's the red.
Out there along, it runs from, basically, Front Street to, is it to Ninth? Ninth or Seventh? Does that go how far?
To Ninth Street.
To Ninth Street.
Is the section against high just to go and get access home?
Right. So, the other red section, the length of the avenue, would not apply there.
And that's, this would be titled Highway Commercial Limited Access.
Correct.
And we would amend, then, would we need Jessica to amend our zoning ordinance to our zoning map to describe that as limited access?
No, that's, that's pretty well understood, that Route 30, Route 30 is the only limited access right of way.
I didn't know, since we've run to all those colors, if we needed.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Throw another color on that.
Any future changes would be done using the same language. So, let's say that zoning district were to change, because the comprehensive plan identifies it as being something else.
Gateway.
Yeah, gateway commercial. It would still, we'd still keep the limited access.
Description.
Description, because then you're not going to see this type of a billboard alone, Lancaster Avenue.
Right. And this basically is the only place along that stretch that it could go, because once you get past Fifth Street, you're starting to have some residential properties along there.
Right there, something.
Yep, yep.
Wouldn't you wouldn't be able to do anything.
And besides the local ordinance, PENDA is not preventing billboards to be in any commercial or industrial.
But even within that, once you get past Fifth Street, you have houses very close to Third, that you wouldn't be able to do anything there.
I greatly appreciate your patience in coming up. And I'm thankful that everything was approved for Columbia 2040 and through Lancaster Planning regarding this. I think that more had, and like we just discussed, so that this would only be really the area affected by the ordinance. And this is beautiful, like we discussed, we drove by it a number of times, and you're focused on the people getting on or off the ramp. But once it opens, and you actually have access to see it, it's actually, I would think, bigger, less distracting than what's there now. And I think beautifully done. I think we all agree on that. And so, I believe with the studies to a Brad and you referred, it wouldn't increase the risk of accidents or lessen the safety in that area. So, I would like, now that we've gotten all the answers that we've asked them to wait to have, to live that we approve the amendment to this ordinance.
I would question whether we want to keep the frequency at seven seconds.
Honestly, I would feel more comfortable with 10, and we discussed that at the last meeting, but.
We whispered up here, and we're fine with 10, too.
It's more towards 10.
And what we, what we are doing here is looking at an amendment to our zoning ordinance. We're not looking at granting them permission to put that sign there this time. It is just amending the zoning ordinance that would permit that.
And you explained why you went in this direction.
Jessica, am I correct that they would have to come back for a permit?
They need a building permit.
For the erection of that?
Yeah, definitely.
And would that be something that would just go through staff, since it would be?
We'd get in, you guys do a lot of building and zoning, I bet. We do both, so the zoning would go really quickly, because we know that it would work. The bigger review would be, you guys do this all the time. This would be the uniform construction code, getting it over the Commonwealth Code Inspection Services, because they'll have to do, they may have to, they'll have to take a look at the wall, the engineered retaining wall, it looks like, or is that a foundation? I can't tell from here. And all the electrical. So, but that's pretty easy. You guys do that all the time, yeah.
So, which is the committee regarding the... So wishes of this committee regarding the proposed petition to amend off premises signs along the limited access highways as presented with the change of the frequency message to once every 10 seconds.
So this is a recommendation to council?
This is a recommendation to council, yes.
You have a motion, do you need a second? She made a motion, do you need a second?
I'll say it. Okay, you made the motion, Kelly?
She did.
You did, okay.
If you did.
I didn't catch that. Okay, so I have a motion from Tiffany, and a second from Brad. Okay, any broker weigh in on this motion? Here we go, all the papers signify by saying hi. Hi. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
So this will be a recommendation to council. Jessica will just go to their next meeting.
Hey Deb, would they go to their next meeting? That doesn't have enough time, right? They need more, we need a little bit more.
Because you actually have.
No, we don't, we don't have a meeting for another Tuesday. Tuesday.
You have to advertise.
Or is anyone?
You have to have a zoning hearing at that meeting.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, it'll come up Tuesday as a new item.
As a new item, and to approve the advertising for the hearing.
Exactly.
For the public hearing.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize what you were asking. So if you guys.
Guys, if it works for the time, that's what we'd be asking for, is the permission to advertise.
Right. Right, and that, that would be fine.
And that meeting would be next Tuesday.
Yes, it just has to get to mark by Friday.
Okay. So that's our second one.
We probably start on the Friday.
Okay, good.
Okay.
What's the step after that then?
And council has a hearing.
That's right.
We have to advertise a notice.
She's a wonderful people.
That's right, I'll try my best.
Would you mind sending over a modified?
No, you would.
No, I would not.
I would not.
I'll send you a modified one in Word, so that you can pop it into a heart, I think.
That's minor enough, it doesn't have to start back to the county.
I think it's minor, yeah.
It's already been reviewed by the county. Their.
You're not reducing it, I can see where they.
That's true. It's.
You gotta advertise.
Moving on, pending rezoning and tax amendments. There was a list prepared by the borough, I think we discussed this last month, of things that we had put off until the comp plan had been adopted. When I had the meeting last week to put the agenda together, Jessica, Deb, Paula, Mark, the young lady that was with you, Jessica.
Haley.
Haley. One of the things we discussed was where do we go forward here? And one of the things I did was to go through my archives and try and find some of the things that we had started and kind of came to a screeching halt. So some of that had to do with out there at Second and, out in the Linden Cedar Street area of the Second, Third Linden Cedar. So we will be reviewing that. And one of the things there is, in the comp plan, that area is actually marked as a gateway commercial area. And one of the things that those residents did not want to hear was being in commercial. So we will have to decide where we're going there, and then give them the opportunity for some input again, because they are still industrial out there. Because it's not Colonial Metals, I see the name has changed a third time, so I'm not sure what's going on out there. So by doing this, we did take two other things off, we did take one item off there. We had basically a lot of text amendments we wanted to look at. And I don't know if you recall, but there was a June 21st meeting, that we all sat here with our tables of permitted uses and went through text amendments, and I think we need to pull that stuff out and see where we stand with that. I pulled some of these things out and gave them to Jessica tonight. I think you've all met Jessica, Jessica was our leader with the comp plan, so I'll follow your face here. One of the things that was going to be on the agenda tonight, which is not, is 450 Monmouth Street. They no longer need to have general approval. Jessica, we never signed off, they never brought upon a plan that year. All we saw was a preliminary plan, so.
The only thing we're saying is, they are still working with Derek. The only thing that we said, and what happened, it was a little bit of a miscommunication, I think. So in the summertime, Derek Ronaldo, the borough engineer, issued a July review letter, and in that letter, one of his comments asked the zoning officer to please make a determination as to whether or not relief from the zoning ordinance would be necessary. And the relief, the question was, is a parking lot and a retaining wall, and you know what, forgive me, I didn't realize that he would have this on your agenda, I should have given you all the.
I'm sorry.
I should have given you all the determination letter. So in the letter, what I stated was, was that the building setback is just that, a building setback. And the purpose of a building setback line primarily is to make sure that your street front, everybody's kind of uniform, I mean, there's some exceptions to the rule and some innovation, but for the most part, you don't want those building fronts to be staggered all over the place. So it sets your street line. The other thing it does is it creates some internal buffer yard areas in terms of your, you know, having rear lots backing up to one another, you've got a rear lot building setback, so you can't put any structures there. But when you're thinking about a parking lot, parking lots don't generally adhere to building setback lines. And the reason that is, is because we are going to regulate the, the construction of a parking lot using the ordinance as appurvious area coverage requirements and the open space requirements, and then the internal design requirements that are required for a parking lot for landscaping. So adding in the building setback, I think would be an undue hardship for the property owner, because you're immediately saying, in addition to all this stuff that we need, you also need to provide a buffer, which isn't really necessary for a parking lot based on the transitional use of them. The other thing was, is that in the zoning ordinance itself, in the accessory use regulations, stipulates that if a retaining wall is necessary to secure grade, then it doesn't have to adhere to the building setback. So based on those two things, I said, you know what, we don't need this, you do not need relief from the zoning ordinance at this point in time for what you're proposing. They need to go back to Derek and provide, I believe they need to have a grass strip completely around the proposed parking lot up to the access drive. And I think that's the only thing that Derek's waiting on, really, for them to.
They were here in February of this year, and the final thing there was, there was a motion to recommend to the zoning hearing board approval of the zoning request to have a parking lot that's a principal use, that they apparently.
They got that special exception in February. February 22nd was when they got that special exception.
Okay, all right. So they're fairly good to go.
They are good to go.
Okay, one thing I wanted to bring up here also was, when I was at the, was it the work, oh, Eric left, at the work session of Burke Council, there was an issue regarding driveway in residential area. And what it amounts to is, within a residential area, there has been a driveway put in that takes off for public access several parking spaces on the street.
That was a new curb cut.
It's a new curb cut to allow for four off-street parking spaces. Okay. And the curb cut is the length of those four vehicles being, it's the width.
On sorry. Which is a, which is a, because it's a 36-foot.
Right.
Curb depression, so even though they're taking two spots, they replaced it with four.
But, which are not available to the public. And have the discussion that night was the possibility that there, there is no standalone driveway residential ordinance within the borough. There was nothing that could be fallen back on to keep this from happening. And I just wanted to bring that up, if that's something.
Do you, but is, so the question I would raise is, is this actually a driveway? It's not really, it's a, it's.
It's a parking lot.
No, it's for, it's for parking space, and they're for a structure.
Kelly.
Immediately right off.
Right.
It's not really a driveway, and so I think it's kind of pigeonholing some stuff that may not really apply in this instance.
There's only one way you're going to get in those spaces, and that's, you're going to come straight in. And I'll tell you right now, I have a pickup truck, there's no way you're going to park a pickup truck in there, because I measured my truck and measured what's there, because I live around the corner.
But I think that, and that's.
There's no way they can block the sidewalk, they will be blocking the sidewalk.
But I think, I think that spaces still are 20, yeah, I think there's still, there's still, I.
I'm sure they're legal, but there's no way you're going to get a pickup truck in there without blocking the sidewalk.
To my knowledge, the issue wasn't the fact that they weren't an eight-by-twenty space. To my knowledge, it was the fact that it was the 36-foot curb cut that took away off-street spaces.
Right.
But they added two spaces, and the likelihood that the cars being parked in those two spaces that are no longer available to the public, where actually people living in that house, is pretty high. I mean, it's off-street parking that's next to their lot. I don't see that as a, it's a gain.
Which is a corner lot that they can park in.
Might be the neighbors don't agree with you.
Well, and I get that, neighbors don't like change, but it's certainly our job to.
No, they don't like the fact that the parking was already, without taking.
Yeah.
Without taking.
I don't know.
Increase the number of volumes, it's the same.
No, I think it's the same.
That's what's being watched now, that it continues to be a single-family residential, and not try to cut up into apartments.
Right, the owner was already corporate, had to try and convert it into multiple units, and was told no. But that was thanks to the neighbors.
Okay, Jessica, will we be receiving hard copies of the comp plan?
Yes, I think there are still some changes. Mark actually mentioned to me that there were a handful of things that needed to be corrected, but then yes, that's the next step is for us to print off.
Okay, because I'm looking at him, and what I have is draft copies, and I'm thinking, okay, we should at some point.
We should have drafts, yeah, we will do that.
Okay, do you have any project updates or anything for us, Jessica?
I do not, unless you need a project update. And I say, what project is it?
What project?
And I'll add it.
Text amendments.
No, you went over everything, we're going to start working on, like, we'll do business as usual, and then we'll start adding in these text amendments, and doing that stuff will work.
Okay, I think we've, if any members or members of the audience have any business for discussion by the board?
Well, I just appreciate you being here, I just.
Thank you.
And I'll tell you what, we appreciate you being here. This doesn't work without people coming.
Right. Okay, at 8:05, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have such a motion? Okay, Kelly and Tiff?
You got the other one, sir.
All in favor? Our next meeting will be Tuesday, November 21st. Thank you very much.